Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is September the fourteenth, Special Board of Supervisors meeting. First off, I would like to take a moment of silence to recognize the passing of former Supervisor Thomas Keith Sockwell. Mr. Sockwell was 87 years old, a 32-year resident of Bullhead City. He passed away Thursday, August the 27th. Tom was Mojave County Supervisor in District Two from 2000 to 2012. He was also the Chairman of the Board on many occasions. Tom survived by his wife Sandy of Bullhead City, two daughters, a son, and numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren. So if we could, let's just take a moment of silence to remember former Supervisor Sockwell. Okay, our first item on the agenda, this will be a discussion on possible action, an update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19 updates and taking any necessary actions based upon those updates. We do have a person in the audience that signed up to speak, which is a little unusual. We have not been allowing people to speak during the Call to the Public. In fact, we do not even have a Call to the Public on this. Amanda Kaufman has signed up on Agenda Item Number One, so I'll ask for the county attorney's opinion on this. And also, Amanda, if you have a mask, we need you to wear that during the meeting. Thank you.
During the meeting, I thought I didn't need to wear it, but I was just sitting down.
No, it's not like a restaurant. We ask that you wear it the whole time.
I just wanted to come and talk.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Esplin, can you advise on that?
Yeah, so on these items, it's up to the Chairman's discretion whether to have someone speak or not. On these items, the public does not have a right to speak at them. It's up to the pleasure of the Board and up to the Chairman. And so if you wish to allow it, you can, but you do not have to. It's up to you. In these things, we have not done it. We've not had the public do it. These are items that are specific to the Board. This is not a Call to the Public item, so there's no entitlement by the public to be able to speak on the item. It would be up to you whether to do that or not.
Okay, thank you very much. And Amanda, we all know you very well and respect your opinions, but I think once we let a person, regardless of who that person is, speak, then it kind of sets a precedence, and we have to go forward with that. So if you want to send your comments and writing, I will make sure all the Board members get them.
I have them today. Can I give them to the team?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I just want to clarify, it's not a call to the public that I'm requesting. I'd like to speak on this actual Agenda item. It's a regular Agenda item.
Right.
On the rules of order, it said that I could sign up to speak on a regular Agenda item.
I think the county attorney did clarify that, so...
Okay, I just want to clarify that it wasn't a call to the public that I was wanting to discuss today.
Yeah, and just to clarify, see, when you have a call to the public, that gives the public the right to be able to speak for 30 minutes, because we're inviting, we're allowing that public to do that. Here, we don't have a call to the public, so you don't have that. For an item like this, this is a limited public forum where it does not allow, we do not have to allow the public to speak on regular items. Only if the item was, for example, an item where we had a public hearing, then you would be entitled to be able to speak at that public hearing. This is not a public hearing. This is something that the public can view, their participation is limited in the sense of listening, attending. You're welcome to attend here in person.
Yeah, I understand the time bar, it's just on your website, it's forwarded differently. So this is a regular Agenda item, and that's why I didn't sign up to speak. So you guys might want to consider reviewing that, updating the website.
I can look at that, but I can just tell you from a legal standpoint, it's up to the Chairman whether to decide whether to allow that, and there is no general right of the public to have that, so...
Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop.
Thank you, Amanda.
Amanda, if you'd like to stay after the meeting, I'd be glad to meet with you.
Okay.
Okay, Denise Burley at the podium. I'll turn the floor over to you, Denise. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'll run through my usual. It's a fairly short update this afternoon, but we'll obviously respond to any questions that you have after the presentation. We have had 3,735 cases to date in Mojave County. The average age of cases is 47.8. We have 206 deaths, with the average age of deaths being 76.2. We have 3,069 completed investigations out of the 3,735. This represents a 82% completion rate at this point. 77% of confirmed cases have recovered to date. Excuse me, to date. And we will represent, or present, 569 hospitalizations in the fact sheet this afternoon, or this evening, out of the 3,735 cases, which is approximately 15% of the cases had to be hospitalized during their illness.
Denise, can I interrupt?
Sure.
I forgot to have the Clerk of the Board check to see if our other supervisors are in the line.
Certainly, yes.
My apologies.
No, not at all. Supervisor Johnson?
Present.
Supervisor Gould?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much, and I apologize again, Denise.
No, certainly, that's totally fine. Weekending 9/12, we had 40 reported cases. The previous week ending, we had 122 reported cases, so we had a significant decrease in the last week. Again, we'd like to continue seeing that trend and that trajectory of cases go down, so that was a very positive outcome for the last week. And we're sitting right at that 10% positivity level for testing, just on a day-to-day basis, so not looking reflective back on the business benchmarks and school benchmarks, but looking at today. So Supervisor Johnson, you had mentioned last Thursday, or asked the question about the difference of 12 cases, and I do want you to know that I'm still looking into that. I haven't forgotten. And I will get that back to you as soon as possible. I wanted to also share the testing numbers from the HHS testing events that are still being conducted as of today. So I believe I reported on Thursday's testing, so I'll start with Friday's testing, which was in Kingman. We had 73 tests administered that day. Average wait time was about a minute, so people got through very, very quickly. Average time to administer the tests is about three minutes, so it's a very, very fast process. So we have that for Friday. For Saturday, we had the Bullhead City testing event. We had 151 people tested that day. Again, three-minute wait time and three minutes to be tested. Also on Saturday was another Kingman event. We had 69 people tested, average wait time a minute, and three minutes for the testing, which is the norm. And then on Sunday, in Lake Havasu City, there were 154 tests administered that day, two-minute wait time, three minutes for testing. And then we have one additional testing event today. The results from these testing events will start rolling in probably today and through Thursday. And once we have compiled those results, we'll present those to you and also give that information to the Communications Director, so that he'll have a comprehensive overview of all the testing that was performed and the results from that testing. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Denise?
Okay.
None.
Okay. Just want to give an update on enforcement. We did have one business that we've inspected on Friday and then followed it up again on Sunday, and following the protocols that were laid out to you on Thursday. And in that case, in the first visit, there were, the business was out of compliance. In the return visit, the business was in compliance. So those inspections seem to be making a point and ensuring that we follow up and give that business feedback along the way. When we do go out to these businesses, we do provide them, again, with the executive orders that apply to those particular businesses. We give them a copy of the inspection checklist that's been fully completed. We give them the requirements for that line of business, and then we give them the flow chart that was laid out for you on Thursday, so that they can see the chain of events that occurs over time and what those next steps would be if they remain out of compliance. And I don't have any other updates at this point. Are there any questions I can entertain by Board members?
Does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we need to see if IT can turn the volume up just a tad. Okay, Supervisor Johnson, I think they've got it turned up now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was curious, Denise, can you give us kind of an update on what the schools are doing and how that's progressing?
Sure, absolutely, Supervisor Johnson. The schools are all basing their decisions off school board movement and decisions, so... And I don't have Tiara here, who's my point person for schools, so I apologize. And I can actually put something together for you that's more formal, that gives you a general overview of all the different school districts and the stage that they're in. But they are, the school boards themselves are making the decisions whether or not to stay virtual, move to hybrid, or provide in-person education. And they're basing that at least somewhat on some of the information that we've provided both to you and to the school districts, based on their individual communities, but also realizing that when we provide information on testing by a community level, on a community level, what's important to remember is some of the testing is so low that it just takes one test to skew those numbers very high and/or two tests to make them jump very quickly. So in those particular cases, you know, they have to take that information somewhat with a grain of salt, knowing that, you know, the results from two tests does not reflect the percent positivity of an entire population or community. So that's really important for them to take into consideration as they're making and basing their decisions on that data. So Supervisor Johnson, would you like me to provide you with a more comprehensive update on the schools?
Sure, if you have that thing, that'd be interesting. Thank you.
Do my best to get that to you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Supervisor Angus. I have a question for Ryan. Ryan, may I use my time to read the comments from the member of the community who wasn't allowed to speak?
If you wish to use it that way, you can do that, if you like.
I don't need permission.
It's got to be, it's got to be related to the item, obviously. I don't know...
It's related to COVID.
Yeah.
Because in the past, I have read things that, we've all read things that people have sent us by texts, and since she's came all this way, I think that I would like to use my time for that.
I'd like...
Okay? And you have my authority to do that. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't think I needed that authority, but...
You don't, but I'm giving it to you.
All right, well, thank you.
Because I'm a health person.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman Bishop and Supervisors. As an employer, business owner, and resident of Mojave County, I'm surprised that I find myself here, there, before the Board of Supervisors. Six months ago, on March 18th, Mojave County declared an emergency in preparation of a very destructive deadly virus before it was even detected in our county. The full intent of this declaration was to open up a line of potential funding to prepare the county residents and businesses for an impending virus outbreak, to survey and mitigate the risks of overwhelming our healthcare system and maintain peace and order throughout the process. The objectives of the emergency order were achieved in April. Five months ago, extraordinary precautions were implemented throughout the county. Governments, residents, and businesses took necessary precautions to mitigate the spread. The healthcare system never reached capacity or became overwhelmed, and many brought in patients from outside the county since their other services had been limited and they were trying to survive. It was never an emergency. It was in the long-term care facilities, and even those have leveled off and are back to normal medical transports. To date, the county has received $9.1 million in emergency funding to offset this crisis and has only allocated a fraction of it. It's not an emergency. Why has this emergency declaration not been ended? I watched the Board and its Health Director speak last Thursday, September 10th, and I'm astonished by the tone and direction the Board took in streamlining the process to shut down small businesses that are simply trying to make ends meet. There is no emergency. Why is the county harassing businesses trying to survive and put food on their tables? This harassment is so perplexing, falling short of specifically discriminating against certain businesses. The transparency of government has been lost. We cannot even get an accurate count of active positive cases within the county. The total cases over a six-month period are completely useless. There is no clear sense of whether or not this disease is actually active, but the county has this information readily available. Why is the county not releasing this information? As an outsider looking in, it appears as though the county is trying to keep this emergency alive, long past the true need for such an emergency, and has reached the point that public trust in the government has been compromised. And if and when there is ever a need to have public compliance for any future emergency, the public is going to remember when the county cried wolf and not have near the compliance of the county, the compliance the county initially had with COVID. Please stop harassing the businesses. Please stop trying to manage individual decisions. Regards, Amanda Kaufman. Thank you, and thank you, Chairman.
Are there any other questions I can answer?
Attorney Esplin, could you answer the question from Ms. Kaufman? Why has this emergency declaration not been ended?
Well, I'm not a healthcare professional. I defer to the Public Health Department. I defer to the State Department of Health. I also defer to the Governor, the various Governors throughout the states, and the President of the United States. There's been a declaration made, and the, those who govern us, both on a local level, state level, national level, have determined that we still are in a pandemic and there's still a state of emergency, and those persons who have the authority to remove the designation of a state of emergency have not removed it, so it's still in place.
Thank you. And Denise, could you take the question of why the county is not releasing the information in regards to the accurate count of active positive cases within the county?
So I'm not sure that we're not doing that. Are we looking really at the difference between the confirmed cases and those that have recovered that would actually, and minus deaths, would equal our active cases? So if that's a statistic that people would prefer be included in our fact sheet in more direct way, we can certainly look at doing that.
Okay, and then lastly, there was a question, why the county is harassing businesses trying to survive. Could you point out the reason why the Health Department does what they do in regards to this?
Certainly, certainly. I think when it, it's public health's role to, of course, protect public health, which is a much broader statement than just looking at individual healthcare. So our role in the community is to ensure that people can remain healthy in our communities. So during this pandemic, some of the mitigation strategies and preventative steps that have been outlined before for you are reducing our case counts. And while not always the most popular, I recognize you can see within some of our EPI curves that have been out in the public in our fact sheets, that there is a correlation between the timing of the implementation of those and the results of those. And I realize there are other factors that play into that, I do. But looking at those strategies, those mitigation strategies and preventative steps, those are places that we really feel are important to maintain until we can continue to see these positivity levels go down, until we continue to see our case counts go down, which last week was a great reflection of that.
Okay, and do you think the county is trying to keep this emergency alive?
No, I don't look at it through that lens, I suppose. I think what I see is that the steps that are being taken are preventative steps, right? So what you've seen is that decrease in case counts, which has also resulted in decrease in deaths, and it's also resulted in decrease in hospitalizations. And our hospitals are back more at their normal levels of care. So the stress that's been on them for the last month, six weeks, eight weeks, has been reduced significantly. So there's, again, a correlation there, and so we want to see that continue and believe that masks are just a small way for us to protect our families, our friends, and those around us, our neighbors, and even people we don't know.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions?
Madam Chairman, Gould here.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, do we know how many of our patients that are positive are asymptomatic?
Let me see if I can get that information for you, Supervisor Gould. And you're referring to all, all cases? Is that...
Of the cases that are active currently.
Okay, yes.
Madam Chairman, I also have a question. I also have a question for Ryan. Ryan, would a majority vote of the Board of Supervisors remove the state of emergency from Mojave County?
Supervisor Gould, that's a good question, and yes, it can be. If you look at the ordinance, two parts to this. One, under state law, local jurisdictions, the Chairman can issue a state of emergency under certain circumstances, such as this one, but it's also subject to applicable law or subject to local law. Back in 1999, this Board passed an ordinance, it passed an ordinance that specifically authorized the Chairman the authority to pass a state of emergency, which she has done. She's done everything consistent with the law. She's followed the law. She's done exactly what the law says. And if you look at that ordinance, it also specifically states that the Board could, the Board by a majority vote could override or reverse what the Chairman has decided. So yeah, the Board here could vote and say, we were going to remove the emergency here locally here from Mojave County. This Board could do that. It's specific in the ordinance, it allows them to do that at any time. For the last six months, this Board has authorized to do that. If the Board wishes to do that, I'd recommend that you put it on the Board Agenda, so that the Board can properly debate it and properly pass a vote. But it would have to take majority of the vote, and it would only be for the state of emergency for here in Mojave County. I also just want to differentiate, that's the legal part of it. In terms of the pandemic and so on, that's the science and medicine of it that I don't have the qualifications to specify. I'm going to have to rely upon the Public Health Director and the State Health Department and the other medical professionals to determine the state of a pandemic and so on. That's outside of that. I'm just talking about the legal nuts and bolts of it. Yeah, locally, they could.
I believe we amended that also, so that a state of emergency could only exist under a pandemic declared by either the CDC or the Mojave County Director of Health.
I don't know if that's correct. I'd have to look at it. This was passed in 1999. I don't know if there's been any changes to it. I'd have to look to determine, but I actually think it's more consistent with what is specified in Title 26 of the Arizona Revised Statutes, but I'd have to double-check that.
I remember walking out into the audience and chatting with Denise about how she wanted that phrase. Whether that motion passed or failed, though, I don't remember. I knew so many times that it all gets muddled. Thank you.
Sure.
Denise, do you have any comments on that?
I don't remember, honestly. It's been some time, so I'd need to read through that, and I will defer to County Attorney Esplin to provide an opinion on that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I believe that...
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
...four or six weeks ago, I made a motion that we lift that emergency. So I think we've already, we already attempted it, and I probably can do it again, depending on whatever the outcome is. Didn't pass that time.
Actually, I don't think you made a motion. You made a comment that there was no reason to make a motion.
I don't recall. I don't know.
I don't remember. Maybe we can look into that, but you're saying right now that somebody can make a motion.
Yeah, I'm just following what the law is. I'm following the law. The law is very clear, and I have to emphasize the stress. Chairman Bishop has followed the law here. She has followed exactly what the law is, and this is the law...
I don't think anyone's challenging that.
I know, but I, this is an audience that everybody's watching here. I want to make sure that the people know that Chairman Bishop has followed the law, and so has the Board, and not just these people, but so that they understand that this Board has passed laws in 1999 that specifically said this. They're following the law. So if the Board wishes to declare that the emergency is removed, then you can do that. You can do that. You've just got to follow the law and follow the procedures. In 1999, an ordinance was passed consistent with Title 26 of the Arizona Revised Statutes that allows the Chairman to pass it, subject to the Board convening, and the Board can override that. You can do that at any time, and any Board member can bring that before the Board. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, and I'd just like to point out that even though my being the Chairman and declaring this emergency has nothing to do with me personally, if the Board by majority vote wants to end the declaration of emergency, I think it should be placed on an agenda so we can debate the pros and cons and find out exactly what that means when we do end this emergency, if we end it before the Governor ends his. So that'd be my recommendation. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Ms. Burley, at what point in your position do you feel that it would be prudent to lift our restrictions? There's got to be a time of relative decline or statistically the numbers come in.
Sure.
But at what point is it logical to make that recommendation?
Supervisor Watson...
I know you're just kind of caught off the cuff here, but at some point in time, we do need to take a look at it, and I would like to have your opinion before, as a health expert.
Certainly. You know, I think that there are, as we continue to see cases decrease and we continue to see the percent positivity decrease, I think the reasons for that continue to be the steps that people are taking to continue that effort, the mitigation strategies. But without a vaccine or some other form of treatment, the virus will remain out there in the public and circulating. So without taking some of these mitigation steps and using these strategies, I feel like we're just kind of setting ourselves up to go back up again, and that's the prediction. And again, prediction based on our past and our experiences, both with the state closure and then the mask proclamations. If we look at them there, you've seen the EPI curve and the waves, and those are what we would be looking at moving forward without some of these steps. So whether or not you need an emergency order to do that, and what extra powers or steps that gives the Board, or whether or not it's, we continue on as public health to ensure the messaging is out there on what steps have to be taken. I don't know if there's some separation there, I guess.
And I understand that there's some concern of a second wave or somewhat of a genetically altered new portion of this pathogen. Is that correct?
There is, there is. I mean, there's always mutations that occur over time. And I think the other, the other real concern is that as we move into flu season and we see the potential for dual illness, a person getting flu and COVID could worsen the symptoms and... getting flu and COVID could worsen the symptoms and be more difficult for someone to fight off. So all of these steps that we're taking here, the masks, for example, at least in the southern hemisphere where they've just gone through their flu season, have reduced their flu numbers down significantly. And so it has the potential to do the same for us. It has, these masks, I realize, again, popular or not, that's not where I'm at. You know, my view is just through a public health lens, and they are working to prevent the spread of illness, and that includes the potential for flu in the fall and the winter.
Thank you, Ms. Burley.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question would be for Ryan. We need the emergency declaration along with the state's emergency declaration to get federal funds, isn't that correct?
Supervisor Johnson, the question, if I understand correctly, the question is if we need the local emergency declaration and the state emergency declaration in order to receive federal funds? I don't--
Yes.
I think that was the general thinking that we had back in March, but I don't know if that's for certain. I don't. You'd have to look at, you'd have to look at what the federal funding required. I mean, I'm guessing that that's probably what they required because, you know, they're not going to give something if you don't have a local emergency and so on. So there, I think that's probably correct. I just don't know for certain. I don't have that in front of me to determine whether that is correct, but I think that's essentially what we were looking at back in March.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Denise, do you have anything further?
I do not, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go on to the next item. This will be a discussion on possible action to approve either January 22nd, March 26th, 2021 for the statutory training for the Mojave County Fire Board members. This was placed on the agenda by Hilda Angus.
Thank you. I received a request from Chief Pat Moore from the Bullhead City Fire District for putting together, you know, because of COVID, everything is changing, and the request was that the Arizona Fire District Association conducts two training conferences annually. However, due to the current COVID-19 restrictions, we are transitioning to regional classes with a smaller number of attendees. These classes with AFDA will be conducting are the statutory required training for elected board members and newly appointed fire chiefs. Newly elected officials and appointees, fire chiefs have 12 months to complete the required training. We have targeted the geographical areas of the state with classes to be offered in northern, western, eastern, central, and southern Arizona, and so we put together three dates, and he wants to use this auditorium, and I knew we had to bring it here because we have had requests before early on in the COVID-19 event, and so that's what he's asking for. So the two dates that we're looking at is either January 22nd or March 26th, which would be about five or six months from now. And I think, and Chief Moore is here, I think the reason he wants this particular is because it's centrally located to all the fire districts in this region.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. My preference, I mean, we don't know exactly where we're going with the COVID. I would recommend that they look at that Bullhead Field House, which is a lot bigger facility. When we talk about people coming over and centrally located, they're going to be spending the night anyway. These people all have to pay a fee to attend this, and they also have an online class that they can do. So I really see no reason to have them in our building.
Madam Chair, I think the reason you wanted this particular was for the convenience of the people because most of them are coming from. And if anyone has any questions, Chief Moore is here. May I call him up and ask him a question or two?
In a minute. I want to make sure our supervisors have their questions answered first, and thank you, Chief. It'll just be a few minutes. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Supervisor Watson.
I have a question for Mr. Espin. Mr. Espin, as I recall, this is mandatory training for Fire Board members. If a new Fire Board member does not complete this training within the one-year time span, can that person be removed?
They can.
Okay. Answers my question.
Sure.
And is there a, what process would there be in order to do that?
Yeah, and if you may recall, we, this was one of the first things that I handled when I first started here. It's a process where a referral is made to the supervisors, and then the supervisors refer it to the county attorney's office for possible enforcement. So what happens is if somebody does not, if somebody's not in compliance, they would issue the complaint or referral to the supervisor. Supervisor would then refer it to the county attorney's office for possible enforcement.
Madam Chair, just to remind you guys, that's the list that Mr. Flynn sends out to me that I forward to you guys at the end of the year every year. So this is what this training--
Right, right. And about the process, the Board of Supervisors makes the determination then to release that person of their responsibility. Is that correct?
I don't, I think actually they send it to the county attorney's office for enforcement, and then I think if we wish to enforce it, I believe it's a court action. I'd have to double check the statute. I have to look. It's been a while since I've seen it.
Right.
But I believe the part is the supervisors refer the matter to the county attorney for enforcement, and then I think the county attorney can file a court action, I think is how it works.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'd have to double check the statute, though.
Okay.
Sure.
Manager Elters, the City of Kingman requested to use the auditorium for their city council meetings, and I believe the college has asked to use the auditorium and various other groups. So how does this differ, or does it differ from previous requests that we've had during the COVID situation where we're trying to keep our employees safe from outside?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, board members. I am aware that the City of Kingman requested in the past. I was not aware that the college requested it and the time that they did. And I do not have the history to compare how they would be different with the City of King-- My understanding is the City of Kingman requested to use the auditorium for city council meetings. So to that end, I'm assuming that it was not just a single city council meeting, it was multiple. So in that sense, it is different than this request because it is for one event. But for the record, when the City of Kingman requested the use of the auditorium, that request came to the board, and the board voted to decline the request. Again, we perhaps are comparing apples to oranges, Madam Chair and supervisors, but to answer your question directly, that is what the board voted on in the case of the City of Kingman's request.
Madam Chair, just to follow up on that.
Yes.
It wasn't the college, it was the City of Kingman wanted to do the regular, their regular board meetings. At the time of their request, it was kind of at the heightened time of the COVID pandemic, where we even stopped traveling type thing, so the board made the decision to decline. The other person who, or the other entity that asked for usage of the auditorium was NAC-fed. And again, that was during about the same time period. So it was kind of in a earlier state of the COVID pandemic and prior to us formatting our auditorium differently and having a mask mandate, things like that. So that's just the history to follow up with County Manager Elters.
So Chief Moore, if you'd like to come down and see if we have any questions from the board members. And first off, what are your other options?
Good morning, members of board. We really don't have any other options. I could go to the Field House. We're trying to do something located in this Kingman geographical area because there's 14 fire districts that would be eligible to participate. If we hold it down in the Bullhead area at the Field House or one of the other venues, and there's four districts down there, it would just require a little more travel time and a little more distance, farther distance for the other districts to go to. So that's why the Education Committee believed and the Executive Board for AFDA selected this Kingman area. So we would, if we're not successful here today, you know, we would find a different venue if we could to try to facilitate that.
Okay, and how many attendees do you estimate will be?
I, we're guessing anywhere between 20 and 30. There's 14 fire districts in Mojave County. It would be open enrollment.
But it would be under 45 at least, right?
We think there's probably three, probably at the very most, there's only three members from each of those districts. There's two for some of the others, and some of the board members would take opportunity to take the class elsewhere potentially. So our best guess is we're looking at between 20 and 30 people.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Angus.
Madam Chair, so we really are talking six months away from today, and if we're still in this situation, we're probably going to have bigger problems than this, but let's just say we are in the same. I think we're set up for that amount of people. They'd be asked to wear masks and sitting, you know, away from each other. We have the luxury of that in this particular auditorium.
Correct.
Which is probably one of the reasons why you--
Absolutely. That's one of the reasons why we selected there or have identified this to be an option force is because of what the mask mandates and the social distancing, we're looking for an area where we could put people into the program that wouldn't be at risk. And some of the other places, like our training facilities, are just not this large, and so we can't socially distance, and we can't do some of the other things that we'd like to do.
Right.
So when we typically host, it would be a one-time event. We typically host a conference every January, but obviously we've canceled it in response to some of this COVID-19 stuff, and we're certainly hopeful that we're going to be passed it by then.
So you gave two dates, January and March.
Yes.
And either one of them would work? Is it one that's much better?
I would prefer, the Education Committee prefers, I'm on the Education Committee, we prefer the January one. In the communication, we said we'd be doing central, southern, northern, eastern, and western Arizona. Whatever date doesn't fly in January, if we were to do March, then we'd be doing January elsewhere. So prefer the January location, but at the end of the day, we're certainly receptive to either day if we could get that approved.
Okay.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Chief Moore, how are you doing this morning?
I'm doing good.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Did you happen to check into the auditorium at Lee Williams High School?
No, no, we have not spoke to any of the school districts. They would be the next option force. I heard reference to maybe using the Field House, but, and we, and Bullhead Fire has used the Field House for some training stuff, but it's not as geographically located. So if we're not successful here, then we would look to do another venue located here in the Kingman area, most likely.
Well, you know, I have a propensity to make good decisions for fire people, but please do look into the Lee Williams Auditorium, and we can reevaluate after that.
Okay.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson.
Hey, is it, Chief Moore, this is available online, this class, correct?
Correct.
I guess one of the biggest problems I have is that the Fire Association or whatever it's called got legislation, you know, to have mandatory classes, and then the only class that can be taken is through the Fire Association. It just kind of bothers me with that setup. That's all, Madam Chair, thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Angus.
I just want clarification from Supervisor Watson. So you think, like, you're thinking a school would be safer than here?
What day are you going to have the training on, a Saturday or?
It's going to be on a Friday.
On Friday?
Yeah, we're looking at the fourth Friday. So the calendar that we've put out would be to host these classes geographically, as we said, on the fourth Friday of each month, starting in December, and January, February, and March.
Is it an impossibility to have it on Saturday? When school is not in session?
It's not an impossibility. That's, we don't typically have the best turnout for our classes on a Saturday or Sunday. During the week is when we've had our highest turnout for attendees and enrollees.
So Fire Board members aren't interested in coming to town on Saturday instead of Friday? I didn't know that they were paid that much.
Well, it's, we have these internal discussions. I have no idea what motivates them, but they prefer to come on the weekdays and not on the weekends.
Thank you, Chief.
Supervisor, Madam Chair, but that would be assuming that the school would want to pay extra to have people come out on a Saturday to open up and clean up and do that. So there's a cost to that. Again, 2030, so can I make a motion or is there more discussion?
You may, yeah.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve March 26th for the statutory training for the Mojave County Fire Board members.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to add that I did that one because it is six months away.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, so that's the approved, the March 26th for the statutory training for that to occur here in the auditorium, is that correct?
Yes, for here in this auditorium, the Board of Supervisors auditorium.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Chairman Bishop.
Supervisor Watson.
Thank you. Chief Moore, I'm sure you're going to walk away a little dissatisfied with my vote, but if you'll come back at some point in time, real soon, after you've investigated some other alternatives, such as Lee Williams High School, such as having it on a Saturday instead of a Friday, with the understanding that we've, you know, still in the midst of this situation with a COVID, I would possibly be more in favor of using this facility after you've exhausted other possibility.
Okay.
And Supervisor Watson, I agree with that. I think if it was on a Saturday, more of our citizens and employees would not be in and around the auditorium, so that would be more to my liking, and if you were to check with other locations, like the Field House or any of the schools within the areas that would be able to hold a group of this size, if you strike out on all of those, and this is your last resort, then you'd have my support. Okay, any other comments? Supervisor Gould.
Gould here. Folks, I believe these are residents of our very own county that would be coming to attend this. I don't know how many people from out of town would be attending. I'm sure they would go to the one that was in central, south, or east before they would come up north. So these are folks that are already in our community. So the spread of disease is not going to come from another area. Thank you.
So Chief Moore, the students, the fire personnel attending, they would be attending from not just Mojave County, they'd be coming from the region?
There's an open enrollment, but the class is designed to be geographically located so that the members, the 14 fire districts of Mojave County would be the, they're the intended targets.
Okay, but people from Yabapai and La Paz?
We're going to do a class in northern, north part of state. We're going to do a class in the south and central and on the east side. So western would include, hopefully, the 14 districts in Mojave County as well as the one or two districts in La Paz, but that's the intended target, is to house it geographically so we get those county boards represented there.
Okay. Yeah, my concern is our numbers are steadily going down, and if we bring in other counties, then that could expose us to other areas. Okay, any other comments?
One more thing. It's six months away. I can't, I can't stress that enough. It's six months away. These are taxpayers from Mojave County. And Sam, how many people at any given Board of Supervisor meeting do you think come and sit here? I mean, it's, in the beginning, we had very few, but the numbers are going up. I think there's between 30 and 50 people that come to our Board of Supervisor meetings now, either from outside or employees.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus, for the regular board meetings that are being held once a month, that is a reasonable, I have not counted them, but to say somewhere-- once a month, that is a reasonable, I have not counted them, but to say somewhere between 30 and 40 because I don't think we can fit, we're not supposed to have more than 50 people. I do not believe we've had 50 in this auditorium, but 30 to 40 is probably a reasonable number.
Right, right, which is about as much as Chief Moore is saying is going to come here. And again, to project that this is going to affect our numbers six months from now, I think is a little out there.
I think you're, I hope you're right. I hope you're right, because if our numbers keep going down, this is not going to go away and--
Right, right. And if we are in a, and if, right, but then it could be reassigned, I'm sure, right? I mean, you're just trying to make your--
Yes, correct. We're just trying to send out the information and get us on the calendar and distribute the information.
And if something happened that the numbers go up or we have some other crazy pandemic going on, then we'd have to come to you and say, you can't have it anymore.
If that happened, you could accommodate the class somewhere else with short notice?
We potentially, if we were to restore back to those numbers we had, we would probably have to cancel the class and then petition to see if we can get waivers or extensions for those newly elected board members or appointed fire chiefs from that 12 months, because we have discussed that with the Education Board, that if we weren't going to get the flattening of the curve, we're headed in the direction we wanted to go, that we would have to circle back around and potentially evaluate that. But the AFDA board and the Education Committee are certainly hopeful that, you know, we're headed to the good side of this pandemic.
So could you do this online if it came to a result like that where we had to cancel at last minute?
Yeah, we could offer a couple of other opportunities for us, I'm sure.
Okay. Just trying to make it convenient. Supervisor Watson.
Chief Moore, I can't imagine that it'd take more than a couple of days to find out your other possibility, and I'd be more than willing to bring it back at one of our other meetings after you've exhausted any other opportunities. Just keep us informed, and I'll tell you upfront, I'd be more than willing to bring it back, but today, I'd like you to look at other options.
In fact, I would bring it back on the regular meeting agenda. Was that October the 5th? Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there further discussion?
This is what the city--
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails, and if you'd like, we'll put it back on the agenda for October 5th--
Okay.
--unless you find another location, then please let us know.
All right, all right. Thank you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, I'll adjourn this meeting.